Well, good morning, Mr. Manager. Unfortunately, we have one working mic in the entire room right now.
One and a half, yeah.
Is yours halfway working?
Yeah, it's kind of halfway.
Okay, so we've got one and a half working mics. As the Commissioners need to speak, we can pass this mic back and forth, otherwise they won't hear anything that you have to say. I know that we've got some important topics. The mic up there works, from what I understand, so we will press on with the meeting this morning.
So, two general topics today. And we're going to start off with Susan and Cody, and we're going to talk about groundwater and floodwater and drainage. That's the first topic. And then Jason's here to kind of discuss the finality of the 2019 session legislatively. What, we'd like to hear his thoughts on how that went, and then maybe talk a little bit about what 2020 is shaping up to look like. So, we'll start with Susan, who has a presentation, and then Cody is here also, and then, and there's a number of issues within this topic we want to talk about, the Derby pumps, some zoning restrictions perhaps, and maybe some FEMA relief questions. So, we'll try to hit all of that in this presentation, so.
Right, yeah. Thank you. Morning, Susan.
Good morning. I want to start with groundwater flooding issues and get basic with hydrology 101, and talk, so we're all on the same page here. Your best aquifers are sand and gravel, where you have a lot of open pores, and it's permeable, meaning the water can transmit through the pores from one pore to another. So, your best aquifers with the best yield are the sand and gravel. You could also have limestone that water can go through, but clay is low porosity and is usually a barrier to water transferring through it. Water, groundwater comes from the rain or snowmelt soaking into the ground. As it starts to soak into the ground, you have, it go through, and in this case, it's picturing sand. As it goes through, it will start building up from the bottom, and the top of the saturated zone where water's filling all of the pores is called the water table. Above that is the zone of aeration, or the unsaturated zone, and has air mainly in the pores. The water table is not stagnant. It moves up and down with the rainfall or drought. So, in the diagram at the top of this slide, you can see a high water table when the groundwater intersects the surface. That's where you get springs. The groundwater does not stay in one place. It moves downhill with gravity, as you see the arrows. In Sedgwick County, groundwater moves mainly from the northwest to the southeast. So, it's not staying in one spot. It's moving through the county. The bottom part of this slide shows through a drought, the water table would drop. You could have wells go dry if it goes below the bottom of the well. Springs can go dry in that situation. So, it fluctuates through the years, through the decades. The top of this slide shows a static water table, what it would look like in a well that is not being pumped. The top of the water table would be the same in the well as it is in the ground next to it. The bottom part of this slide shows, you have what's called the cone of depression. If you've ever sucked a straw and a liquid, you notice around that straw, there's a little cone forming. Same thing with a well pumping. It will form a cone around the well. But I really want to point out on this slide that next to the well, you see the most straw down, and as you move out from the well, it gets less and less. And that becomes important when we talk about de-watering later, that the best effect of a well pumping is if you, right next to it, and the further out you get from the well, the less effect you have. Some years back, in fact, 10 years ago, we looked at Peach Valley Estates down in the south part of the county, 85th Street South to 87th Street South, the interstate to hydraulic. Here's a close-up view of that area. Homes in this area were having extensive groundwater flooding issues. They had contacted the county over time about what can we do to help them with the water in their basements. Here are some pictures I received from people who live in that area. So, you can see the groundwater, this isn't from surface water running off into the basements. This is the groundwater coming up. In fact, some people with cracks in the basement floor, you can see the sand pushed up from underneath the basement floor into the basement. Here you can see after the water's receded on the upper right, you can see the mark of how high the water got in this basement, of course, mold forming along those areas, and a guy waiting in the bottom left photo. Also, you have the problem of the ground being saturated, and the water's on the surface of the ground, and it can't soak in anymore. Now, the photo on the left on this slide shows two pipes coming out with water coming out of them. Those are from sump pumps from a person's basement. The main basements in this area have two or three sump pumps running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, pumping the water out. And unfortunately, when you pump it on the surface of the ground, it's going to soak right back in. It's like a cycle going on. So, we hired groundwater associates to do a report on this area, and what would it take to put in de-watering wells to help this area. They looked at the type of material there. So, the sand deposits were very permeable. As I showed in the earlier slide, water could move through it easily. Shell, which is impermeable, was about 40 feet. So, when the water from the rain goes down and hits the 40-foot mark, then it starts building up and going up and raising the water table. We looked at wells in the area. I sat down and looked through all the water wells on record, and the depth of the water wells were 26 to the 40-foot level. They calculated the transmissivity, or how fast water can move through the area, and they determined that it would require three de-watering wells. And this map shows where they thought the prime locations would be for those three wells. Now, notice the circles around the wells. That's the cone of depression. Notice the closer you are to the red dots, which are the wells, the numbers are greater. But I also want to point out, on this map, these are how much it would draw down the water in 30 days. So, near those wells, you could have them three, you know, five, four, five-foot numbers. As you get further away, you're two and a half feet in 30 days. So, it takes longer to reach those outer homes that are having basement problems. So, if you lucked out and lived near the well, you'd have faster results than if you lived further away. This aerial photo shows those wells and the circles of best influence around those. And to give you an idea of what we would have to look at for de-watering wells, you can see the, before de-watering, you have the diagram, the house with water in the basement, up four feet in the basement. You have domestic water wells, depths from 26 to 40 feet, from what we discovered. Problem is, if you're pumping water out, you want to make sure you have the pumps start before water gets into the basement, but you're not pumping so much water out that the person's private water well would go dry. And all of these homes have private water wells. So, you want to make sure that you're not hurting the people while you're trying to help them. So, after de-watering wells are installed, you would have it trigger, so you'd have an electronic device in the well, kind of like a sump pump, that when the water reaches a certain height, the well would turn on before the water ever got into the basements, and it would pump it down to a certain level and turn off, so you're not affecting the drinking water wells. So, that's what we looked at. And now, the problem is, what do you do with all of this water you're pumping out? You can't put it on the ground. It's just going to soak right back in. You have to get it out of the area. PEC was hired by Public Works to perform a study to determine where we could have the water go and how much it would cost. So, again, you can see the three red dots are the water wells, and the lines they have in there is how you would get the water from those wells out of this neighborhood. And at the bottom, you see the green dash line going, and now the next slide shows, and going till it gets to Cow Skin Creek.
This was done 10 years ago?
No, this part was done two years ago. The PEC study was 2017. The initial de-watering was 2009. So, they used the '09 study. They updated the cost of the wells, and then looked at the, where would the water go? So, you have to get it out of that area. Estimated costs. The wells, constructing them, getting the permits, testing, that's the low-dollar amount, $275,000. That water line I just showed you, $1,350,000. The electrical control system to turn the wells off and on and monitor it, just over $100,000. And then, every project, as you know, has a contingency fund for all the stuff you don't think of, surveying, design, all of that. So, it was over $2 million. We met with the homeowners in Peach Valley Estates, or at least the committee that was assigned to meet with us. We looked at how many properties were there, 155. That estimated cost of the project. If you spread it equally between the lots, that'd be $13,548 per lot, and this is two years ago numbers. And if we had an improvement district, what would be the cost per lot if you bonded this out? 15 years, it'd be $102 a month. 20 years, $83 a month to pay it back. Estimated operating cost also has to be considered because you have to pay electricity on these wells, and it depends on how long it's pumping. So, it could be $46,000 to $66,000. Cost per lot, 28 to 40 more dollars. So, looking at an improvement district, estimating all of these costs together, at least $94 per lot, if not more. And the committee took it back to residents in the area, and they decided not to go with this.
And Susan wasn't part of that reason because if you have vacant lots, you're still being assessed at the same amount, or people that live on two or three, they have multiple lots.
Correct. Excuse me, correct. I was going to mention that on the next slide under risk, okay. Other considerations, you don't just get a permit from the state to do all of this. In fact, I worked with the state on the de-watering well permits, and they're normally only issued for six months. And that said, they're issued to like build something, and if, in a high-water table, and once you're done, the wells are plugged. So, I worked it out with the head of the Division of Water Resources, that they would give permanent de-watering wells for this area, which is rare. So, they were willing to do that for this area. But you might have to purchase property and easements for the lines going down to Cow Skin Creek. You could have zoning of where you're putting the wells, and make sure that matches. Potential risk is what Commissioner O'Donnell was talking about. Would homeowners in the area who have no basement, well, I've heard some say they never had any water in the basement because the builder built it up on, what I call an anthill, built it up high, so it's well above the water table. Would they be willing to kick in money for something that they felt were personally not helping them? And the answer was no, they weren't, because the homeowners talked to other people, and they said, "No, we're not willing to give the money." So, then it might be more per home, as you cut down the number of lots paying for it. Or do you pay for empty lots and homes that have no water problem? So, those are the risks that we're looking at in calculating any of this. Timing, it could take a year for all of this to get built and operational, so it doesn't happen overnight. Now, here's the other issue. This map shows, outlined in yellow, Peach Valley Estates that we were just talking about. We contacted people in the area about, do they have problems with groundwater in their area. Clem Dickerson with the township contacted people. People who lived in Peach Valley Estates contacted others. We were looking at who else has problems besides Peach Valley Estates. Properties outlined in blue have a basement. The pink areas are all of the properties that reported they have high water in their water wells. If there's not a home there, they would have an issue if there was a home there, or they have water in their basements. So, you can see it's not just local to Peach Valley Estates, it's through this whole area. And the reason for that is, you notice the Arkansas River to the right side of this photo. As the river moves back and forth over time, it's depositing these sand deposits, called alluvial, and that makes a very good aquifer. So, it goes from the northwest part of the county down through, parallel on each side of the river, you have a lot of sand deposits and shallow water tables. So, it's going to affect you up in Valley Center or other areas of the county, not just down here. So, through time, we've had citizen requests to ask the county, one is to have farmers in the area pump their wells in order to lower the water table. There's several problems with this. One is, when you have water in your basement, means we've had a lot of rain, which is not the time farmers want to be pumping the water wells. So, that's one issue, you know, that's not when they need to pump. Second is, what do they do with the water? Are you just pumping it out on the ground? You need to get it out of the area. A third is, they have appropriations for the amount of water they can pump for the year. So, now that you have these appropriations, are they going to want to pump in a wet season? And then, later, when there's a drought, when they want to be pumping, they've already reached their allocation and can't pump anymore. So, those are the issues with, and then, you know, I'm sure if we went and talked to the farmers, they'd say no. The others have Derby pump their water wells to lower the water table. And many people have said, "Well, when Derby was pumping their wells, we didn't have water in the basement." If you have an area pumping for decades, it will lower the water table in an area because of decades of pumping. When it's been off, though, you're going to have some issues. We did, we have paid in the past to turn those wells on. Latest was September 2016. We pumped for four months, and it cost $21,742. That was the electric bill. Electric bill went to Derby. Derby then passed the bill on to us to pay it. So, that's over $5,400 a month, electric bill for those two water wells. Gallons pumped, each well was pumping 700 gallons per minute. That's, over that time, that's 241,920,000 gallons that was pumped directly to the Ark River. So, that's good aquifer water going to the river. Give you a visual of how much that is, that's like 242 acre-feet. An acre-foot is one foot of water over the ground, over a square foot. One square mile is six, no, I'm sorry, it was 724 acre-feet. Sorry. 724 acre-feet, that's over a square mile of one foot of water covering an area. So, another way, just shows 1,400 gallons a minute is 84,000 gallons an hour, 2 million gallons a day, 60 million gallons a month. And if you were paying for that water in Wichita on their metered rates, that's $2,849,000. If you had that pumping, it was able to sell it. So, over time, we keep hearing about turn the Derby wells on, and so, we hired groundwater associates in 2017 to calculate what would happen, does, and especially Peach Valley Estates wanted to know, won't that help us? So, they looked at 700 gallons per minute per well for the Derby, looked at the cone of depression, that it would only affect less than one foot in half a mile. So, if you went half a mile from the Derby wells, the impact would be less than one foot. Any rain that would happen during that time would negate the advantage you just gained. It's going to be filling back up that water table because it's so shallow. And they also said pumping the wells would have no effect on Peach Valley Estates. Now, this map shows what they have. I'm pointing at the arrow here up in the northwest part of the map is Peach Valley Estates. Derby wells are down here, the two red dots. This is the map made by groundwater associates. If you pumped both wells, 700 gallons per minute for 60 days, this is the result. Again, think of the cone of depression diagram I had earlier. The area closest to the wells would have the most effect and benefit the most with drawdown. The further out you get, the less effect. And the next map we did from the data, putting the wells in red, homes in yellow in the area. So, there's one home right next to the well, they're going to benefit the most, and that would be a drawdown of four feet in 60 days. No one was within the three foot in 60 days. Red circle, there are a couple homes close to it. The blue circle is two feet in 60 days. You see, there are four homes within that circle. Then, as you go out from the blue circle to the green, you're looking at one, one and a half foot in 60 days. So, you can see, you can benefit the closer you live to a water well pumping, but it doesn't happen immediately. It takes time. And if it rains during this time period, you're negating some of the advantage you just had. So, in summary, the cone of depression does work, but it affects a very small area. The electricity for running the Derby wells was $5,400 a month. The last time we did it was, which was late 2016 into early 2017. The river receives this water, so we're dumping this good water, and it's not the only area in the county with this problem. There are other areas like that. I know there's some up in the north-central part of the county. So, how does the county want to respond for everybody who has groundwater coming up into their basement? Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions for Susan?
Thank you for the presentation. Some of these slides are new, I have not seen before, so thank you for putting this all together. I have a couple of questions. On the, on the improvement district idea, are they allowed to, to pile up money and that they don't spend other, from year to year? Are they allowed to have money that they would save?
That's a legal question.
I'll gladly hand that over to Justin.
The question, the question is, as an improvement district, if they don't spend the money, are they allowed to save that money and use it later years and continue to have a, a ending balance that carries forward year to year?
Good, Justin Wygant, our Assistant County Counselor. Good question, Commissioner Howell. Yeah, an improvement district, like any other local taxing subdivision, would be able to tax and raise money, to have money on hand. And the, the model that Susan presented, what was contemplated two or three years ago when this came up, was both a, the formation, potential formation of a benefit district to help establish the water, groundwater pumps and that, that kind of infrastructure, and to put in place the assessments, but then also to have an improvement district established alongside it, which would be responsible for owning the pumps, and also for financing the electrical costs or any maintenance that would occur to them over the lifespan of those, of that infrastructure. But yes, they could have money on hand. That was the idea, would be that they would be, the improvement district would be the owners of any of that infrastructure, not the county.
Well, the reason I ask is because they could, they could stockpile some money, because I think there's, these heavy rain events are not all the time. They could essentially save up money for the next time this type of thing happens, and then, as long as the water stays between 12 and 14 feet, the system would shut off, and they would be able to continue to not have to pay any money necessarily, collect up money. And when that, when it hits that threshold again, the system would kick back on. So, I was just wondering, you know, has anybody monitored this since 2016 to see what that water table did after we did, we did the de-watering in 2016? What happened to that water table?
It's fluctuated from talking to the neighbors down there. Obviously, it went down below the basement level. It's stayed there for a period of time, and now it's Peach Valley Estates. People have been saying, most of the basements have water in it right now.
Do we have any history going back, how often this type of thing has been happening since Derby shut off their 11 wells?
I do not.
I think it'd be good to know that. And are the farmers that have been asked to turn their wells on, that's, they're regulated by the state?
Right. We can't just go out and turn the Derby wells on. We'd have to get a permit from DWR, which could take up to a month to get the permission.
What I'm saying is that the farmers that might, the farmers that might do this, they're also regulated. They, they're only allotted so much water per farm.
Right, that's their allocation I mentioned earlier, when people asked about just having the farmers turn the wells on. If they use that allocation when they don't need it, they'll be out of water by the time they do need it.
Okay. I had a...
And the point on the electricity that you were mentioning, you saw how much it cost to run the Derby wells. These wells for the de-watering, we're going to be doing 750 gallons per minute, so even a little bit more than the Derby wells, which would have a lot of charge with electricity. That's why we wanted to turn it off and on, not having them run all the time.
In that, in the large map you showed there with the pink, I'm trying to find it where it is now, on page 12 of the, of the handout.
Got it.
Top map there, the, the pink residences across that entire red square, those are areas that have water problems?
Yes. They may not have a property on it now, but from the well data, it's high-water table. So, if there was a house there, you'd really want to second-guess whether you put a basement in.
So, your, the question, should say, the summary you showed earlier showed how many houses, 155 properties?
Uh-huh.
That's just for Peach Valley Estates?
That's right.
Do we know how many homes or parcels are inside that red square?
No, I do not. We can get GIS to do a quick count. This is something we were looking at from the previous county manager, who was just looking at, what could we do for this whole area, realizing it's not just Peach Valley Estates. So, there may be some new homes in a sense this was made. This was a two-year-old map.
If they did, if they did go down this road, you think it's likely the state would authorize them when they hit these types of thresholds? The state would allow them to try to get that water back down to that 12-foot mark?
It would take some work on my part to talk to DWR, because, like I said, usually de-watering wells are only for six-months projects, and they were willing to give a permanent one. And actually, they said this would be a great model for west, rest of the state if we could do something. Now, you're looking at the cost of doing something like this, and what do you do with the water?
So, did, how do we survey the, the people that own properties? How do we know generally whether there's a support or not support for this? Do we send out a letter or collect information?
The Peach Valley Estates group themselves, the committee that was selected, went to all of the neighbors down there in Peach Valley Estates and talked to them.
And so, for Peach Valley Estates, it wasn't support?
There was not support.
Do you know how that, the percentage was at like, was it close?
I do not think it was close.
All right.
Adding another $100 a month for 15 to 20 years.
Well, again, I think the, the operation dollars is kind of worst-case if, if they have times where the rainfall isn't so bad. I think there's a likelihood that the operation of this would, the cost would go way down because it doesn't hit that 12-foot mark.
Mm-hmm.
And so, wouldn't need to pump necessarily.
That's true.
And maybe years, then it goes between events. And so, this is 2019, it's been three years since this really got like this, that I, since we did this in 2016, that was the last time we did this. And when Commissioner Norton was here, he, he had these wells turned on numerous times, I believe, when he was Commissioner.
David can correct me, but I think we've done it four times, David?
Three or four. I can't remember.
Okay. And do we know what year Derby stopped pumping their 11 wells?
I do not. That happened because Derby went in and into a contract with the city of Wichita to receive water from them. I understand that, you know, they had to treat the water because of the hardness of it. And I even brought up to the city of Wichita when we were facing a drought, you have contracts with cities, and you're talking about drilling more wells to the north, but you have wells sitting there already appropriated, ready to go. Why don't you just let them turn it on and help supplement the water that way? And that was not a consideration.
Well, I live in Derby, and when the, Derby made that decision again, maybe my understanding is not quite right, so I apologize to anybody that cringes when I describe this incorrectly, but they, they had a, a large water line installed from Wichita, and they buy their water from Cheney through Wichita. Of course, we all know that that's also a water supply. You know, a few years ago, we talked about a sales tax potentially to bolster water supply, and a lot of cities in the area have, have moved over to Wichita because it's very good, high-quality water. But that does add to the, to the burden of having to have, you know, long-term water planned for our citizens of the area. And so, knowing there's eleven wells down there, I know that Derby always has the option of going back to those wells if they ever had a need to. But I think they moved all of their customers over to Wichita Water, partially because of the, the construction cost of that water line. And this is the way that they, they do that. I, I can kind of envision potentially, you know, you know, it'd be nice if Derby would get part of their water. I think that's what you just sent them in to go, part of their water from these wells.
Right.
And if the water line itself is, is the, is a mitigating factor for their decision, I guess I'd like to know more about that.
Mike, I talked to the city manager of Derby yesterday, and they are going to do negotiations with Wichita, it's time for them to renew that contract. And so, one of the things they're going to look at, this doesn't mean that they're going to look at, is the possibility of using less Wichita water and build a water treatment plant, and then use these wells that they have. This is only a possibility, this, this doesn't mean it's going to happen, it's just something they're talking about. So, just, nobody knows. And Kathy Sexton said it's probably even up to five years before anything would happen.
And it's just good to know that conversation's happening, because that would be less expensive than, like I say, ASR III or whatever it is would be up north. That was a very expensive proposal. Or a pipeline to El Rado, which, which another thing was discussed, was very expensive. And so, in terms of it relieving some of the, the pressure on our Cheney reservoir, water supply for the city of Wichita and the, and the residents, that would be a lot less expensive, I would think.
It means Derby would have to build a water treatment plant.
Right.
It would be very expensive, too.
I guess I'm just-
You've got to look at all the options.
I might point out also that Wichita's water supply is partially from Cheney and partially from groundwater wells to the north, mainly in Harvey County and northern Cedric County.
I'll, I'll hand the microphone over. I just want to say, I, I am sympathetic toward the people in this area, they're really, truly suffering. And I think that the, the cost per month is much less than I thought, although the, the gallonage that we put in the river was higher than I thought. So, you know, roughly five or six thousand dollars a month to, to relieve some, some pressure on these folks, I think is reasonable, but obviously isn't a long-term solution. It's something we ought to consider potentially as a Band-Aid, but we need to move towards something more permanent. Thank you.
Thank, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Susan. Going back to what Commissioner Howell was asking about regarding the Peach Valley Estates project, the vast majority of the cost is the well and the construction, the well construction.
The vast cost is getting the pipes to get the water out of there.
Well, okay, I understand that, but construction-
Mm-hmm.
...was the vast majority. The, the electricity and maintenance-
Is minor compared to-
Right. So, that was, that was the issue. I mean, the, the residents that I talked to, it wasn't the twenty-eight, forty dollars a month that they were concerned about, it was that it's going to be, you know, if they do fifteen hundred, or a fifteen-year deal, it was a hundred dollars a month. But even if the pumps weren't turned on, they still had maintenance and other costs, which I don't think we separated in those conversations, it was just kind of built in.
Right. And you have to consider pumps don't last forever, so you need to set some money aside for pump replacement in the future.
Right. So, I know that was, that was a big consideration, but I think really it came down to, there are many people down there that have multiple lots, so it's, you know, going to be two, three hundred dollars a month.
Right.
Or people have empty lots, they just own vacant land down there, and they're not concerned about it. So, the group that had met with us, and we met with them numerous times, I know Commissioner Norton met with them numerous times, and we did, and that's when we issued this study two years ago, that they just didn't think it was feasible at that time to do anything. The other, the other issue that we had talked about, and I know Chris Labrum's here from MABCD, but we had talked about putting an overlay in this whole area, that we know there are these substantial groundwater problems, and we haven't issued any permits for any basements in the last two years to try to resolve any future problems that we would have with that.
My understanding is they will not issue the permit, and the people come back and complain, then they talk to them about the groundwater level, and they have to sign papers. If they do put a basement in, saying, you realize that there's this issue.
Which is something that should have, you know, may potentially happen before. But, you know, the, the situation is dire down there. I, I don't know what the, the length of time to turn on those water wells would be. Obviously, electricity cost is more than it was in 2016. We all see that monthly on our bills. And then, the other issue is, we know this time Derby's going to be charging us for labor costs with their employees, and so we don't know what that'll be. Because before, I think Kathy Sexton did it out of just the goodness of her heart and desire to help be good neighbors, but I think the city council or some direction down there said, hey, we'll still help, but we're taking our employees away from doing city of Derby issues, taking care of city of Derby issues, send them over here. So, so, I don't know, we don't know what that cost will be. It probably won't be a lot of money, but it will be an added cost on that. But, you know, I've told all these citizens down there that have called me, and I know it shows that it looks like eleven, I, I've talked to far more than eleven people, but it does look like eleven houses will see a benefit if those wells were on sixty days. I personally, that, that's, that's what I would prefer for those eleven people. And I don't know if I'd talk to all eleven houses, I'd have to see what each of those lit, you know, addresses are. But I know for me personally, I would like to see that, even if it was just sixty days and not the, not the full, what we did two years ago, it looks like it was a hundred and twenty days. And that's where the two hundred and forty million gallons came from, so it's roughly two million dollar, or, sorry, two million gallons a day that gets pumped out of these two wells.
Yeah.
So, we'd be looking at roughly a hundred and twenty million gallons of water.
And if, as you mentioned, you have those homes within that final circle, but they have to realize the homes nearest to the wells get the immediate-
Oh, sure.
...relief. And then, as you keep going away, it may be the full sixty days.
Yeah, no question. Some of those houses, well, actually, six, so half of the houses look like they'll, they'll see about less than a foot, point eight-five, so. But it, but, you know, like they tell me, anything will, anything will help. So, thank you.
How long does it take for that water to recede, so we don't get any more rain? The pumps aren't turned on, how long does it take for the water to go away? Will it ever go away?
Yes, the water table will lower, like that one picture I had, where water tables drop when there's no rain. So, the water table will drop over time. It might take twice as long, but it's still going to drop naturally.
What is twice as long?
Hundred and twenty days instead of sixty.
Okay. So, if their basements are wet, they're already wet? And they're, I mean, my basement I had to rip out because it got wet. So, I mean, whether the pumps were turned on, their basement's already wet, right? And the construction is already going to need to be done in their homes. So, is it too late for them to already get sea relief? If, if their basement's already wet, pumping the water is going to pump the water out, but they're still going to have issues?
I think they still have steam water.
Okay. Huh.
Now, shortly after I became Commissioner, we did a study, it was forty or fifty thousand dollars, as I recall, and that's where you got most of this data, correct?
Yes, the PEC study.
But after we did that study, and then we turned it over to the homeowners to see what they wanted to do, they realized at that point in time that it was extremely expensive for any option that we'd put forth. I know, skipping on to another subject, I know that Commissioner O'Donnell talked about MABCD, letting the folks know that there is a problem down there. But do we need to go to MAPD and put some kind of an overlay on there that prohibits any type of, of basements or residents or even businesses with a below-ground basement-type options? Tom, what about that?
I think that we, the, the deal, go ahead, Justin, I think we're going to have to hear the legal response on this, but I think what we have today is kind of an infant, we don't really have an overlay, correct? It's a policy. Question, I think Chairman's question is, is can we formally do an overlay on this area that would at least prohibit basements that are being-
Okay, Chairman, to your question, there's, there's two different ways you could look at that. One would be through zoning or perhaps plating. I think in prior discussions, when this question came up a couple of years ago, and I apologize if my memory's not fresh on all of that, but was that staff was of the opinion that that probably was not as necessarily the appropriate route to prohibit it, but that you could perhaps, one thing that has actually been done by staff, MAPD staff, is when a, when a plat comes through for subdivision committee review and that kind of information, when the water ta, when it's in an area with a higher water table, the city of Wichita historically had a note on the plat that would say that, that it's in a high groundwater table area. And so, now, plats in the incorporated area will have that language. I think that's kind of a, a minor amendment that had been done on the processes. One of the things, and I, I said already that I don't know that planning and zoning would probably be the, the way to address it. I think the discussion was that the, the more appropriate way, if that were to be done, would be that the building or residential codes could be amended, that you could have an area that would be off limits for having basements. There was some discussion with WABA, and their opinion, from what Wes Gallion had said on that subject, was they weren't supportive of having an out-and-out prohibition on basements. And he said you could construct a basement soundly enough with enhanced standards to where it wouldn't leak. So, that was one of, one of the ideas that he had suggested perhaps, was that, and I think he indicated some willingness on WABA's behalf, and Tom can correct me if I've got any of that wrong, to come up with any standards that may, those heightened standards for areas with high groundwater. So, that was kind of where some of the discussion was, and it really, I don't think it ended up going anywhere further from that. But I hope that helps answer your question as to maybe a possible way to address this. But I think you could, if you determined it appropriate, I think you could address it, your building code, not allow basements to be constructed in certain areas, if you saw that appropriate.
Okay, can we ask the staff to explore whether or not it's appropriate to expand the building codes?
We're talking residential code only, we wouldn't be talking about the commercial code. I'm trying to think of this area, I don't, I mean, we could, I don't know if there's a commercial element in this particular Peachtree Estates area, but we could look at IBC and RRC.
Okay. Very good.
But that doesn't solve our problem. But it is good.
But we need to look at it.
Completely.
Another, to currently, and I'm glad Cody's here, is I'm familiar with the Dell area, because that's out in my district. After the Halloween flood, FEMA bought out a number of residences in the Dell because of flooding. And what my question is, do we need to take a look at this, for this area, and see if there's a possibility that FEMA could buy out residences that are, are damaged extensively because of flooding? Cody?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner's Cody Sharvet with Emergency Management. The question of FEMA buyouts hinges, first of all, on whether or not the property is in a floodplain, and I, I'm not familiar with, I did not look up this particular property beforehand or this particular area. We could check on the, the county's floodplain map that's online and get that answer rather quickly here in a moment. The other thing is, even if it is in a floodplain, there's a process that it goes through. They have to be identified as a special flood hazard area by FEMA. And even that is just one step in the process. Then there's a benefit-to-cost analysis that FEMA goes through. And then, after that, we would have to apply for a grant and commit to a twenty-five percent match of whatever the buyout cost would be. So, it is possible, but it, it is a long process.
Okay, so the Dell, the city of Wichita paid twenty-five percent of the cost of that?
Assuming the rules were the same back in ninety-nine or two thousand, whenever they did that, then yes, I would say they probably did.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for Cody while we've got him up there?
Just one question. The Dell, was surface water flooding?
You're right.
A little bit unique, this is groundwater.
This is groundwater flooding, which is going to be an entirely different issue when we try and look at it to get it identified as one of these special flood hazard areas. It will make a difference.
Okay. Well, I just didn't know if FEMA was an option or not, because they're doing stuff down in the Gulf, they're doing stuff all over, and I didn't know if there's something that this could apply to.
I mean, it can be looked at, but it, it's not going to be a quick and easy fix, for sure.
Cody, was there a percentage of damage on each house before it would be eligible for buyout?
I'm sure there is, but I don't know what that number is. Yeah, I'm sure it's going to have to be a major damage, which is forty percent of the appraised value or higher.
Okay, very good.
The rules have, in ninety-eight, that's from stormwater, and we were told back then that FEMA would not cover groundwater, only stormwater, so, but maybe the rules have changed since then, I don't know.
Okay. Well, let's look into it and just see if there's any options there. The other concern I've got is, we pumped out two hundred and forty million gallons of water, and this is not junk water, this is coming out of the aquifer, so this is just about drinking water quality. And if you've got a well in that area, it probably is your drinking water. So, we're down dumping that into the Arkansas River and sending it down to the Gulf of Mexico. I don't know of any environmentalists that would think that it's a wise thing to take two hundred and forty million gallons of, of drinking water, quality water, and dumping it into the river. It sounds to me like that is an environmental concern. The other concern, if two years ago, when we talked about this very thing, at the point in time when we're trying to dump two hundred and forty million gallons of water into a river, is the exact same time that we've got a lot of water going down there, so we're adding to the burdens of everyone south of that. So, with the flooding that we've got down in Oklahoma and Arkansas and so forth, now we're adding another two hundred and forty million gallons of water that we're going to send down to someone else to cause them problems. And I have a significant problem with saying that we're going to correct our problems here, and we're going to create problems for you down there. And so, to, to take water and just dump it out, it's got too many problems to, for me to think that it's even close to a good idea. So, I, I would not support any kind of wells, so I wouldn't support turning on wells and dumping perfectly good water into the river and, and sending it down for someone else's problem. So, Cody, did you have anything else?
Did you still want me to go through a recap of what's happened with the most recent events?
Would that be okay, sir? I was going to have you just kind of talk about most recent events and maybe kind of what we're expecting tonight, while you're up.
You got it. Taking me just a moment here to pull up the link I need, if you'll bear with me.
Kate, would you mind- While you're saying that, the, the one thing I would say, Commissioner Dennis, is the, the plan that Susan put together, it's two months, so it wouldn't be two forty, it'd be roughly a hundred and twenty, right, Susan? With the sixty days. So, a hundred and twenty million gallons, not two forty.
So, we're going to dump a hundred and twenty million gallons, we're going to take taxpayers' money, run wells at six thousand dollars a month, and we're going to benefit eleven homes.
I, I agree, it does seem wasteful to send this water downstream, but it's, we have more water right now than we, than we can use. I mean, if this is, this is a drought time, I would, I would certainly feel totally differently, but we've had an awful lot of rain in the last couple of months, and most of that water has gone down the Arkansas River. And I would say that even a hundred and twenty million gallons over two months, if there were sixty million gallons a month, probably is, is insignificant compared to how much water's going down the Arkansas River. So, in terms of us adding burden to those downstream, I don't know that that's really a factor. But I would just like to remind us that, again, I don't think this is a long-term solution. I think we need to, to allow property owners to know that this is kind of a, a one-time thing, if we were going to do this at all. But I think maybe we didn't communicate that effectively in the past. I don't know that we ought to be here today having this conversation, but I don't think we maybe communicated clearly that this is going to be a, kind of a last-time effort on the part of the county. But if this is the fourth or fifth or sixth time we've done this, then I think we haven't, have not communicated that well enough, in my opinion. But I'd like to remind us, this is a, I view these folks as victims, and even though we're talking about eleven homes within a, in that radius that has about a one-foot or, or greater impact, if you live two miles away, you might see a six-inch change. And six inches at those homes is- And six inches at those homes is, is critically important, and that encompasses a lot more than 11 homes. I don't think our data shows that this morning, but I think the farther you go out, obviously the, the benefit is much smaller, but you incorporate a lot more homes. So, even if it's a six inches, I think it's extremely beneficial to them. But I would just simply say, go ahead.
Sir, groundwater associates said it's a reach of half a mile.
Okay. I, I would just say also that, you know, the, the government permitted these basements to be, to be, uh, constructed, and the government changed where we get our drinking water. And these are, what that's done is, is allow these, these property owners who, they needed to build these homes the last few years, these are homes that were there long before these decisions were made. And as, as a result, they're a victim of decisions that the government made. And so, the average cost right now is $5,000 a year, if you think of it that way. We did $15,000 three years ago, and that was, so it costs us $5,000 each of the last three years if you average that out. I mean, this may not happen again for another three years, but I'm not sure we would ever do this again. But I guess I would say I would be sympathetic to the situation that government essentially created this problem. We have victims because of government decisions. So, I would be willing to communicate more clearly this time and, and help them this time, but it's limited and it's not forever, and it probably, it shouldn't happen again. In the meantime, I'd like to see us work with Derby and see, encourage them to do that idea of, of pulling water from these wells, because I think that really puts us back to where we would have been. The reason that they went to municipal waters is because the state water office limited them on how much they could pull for municipal water supply, and they were, they were getting close to their, their annual limit. And it was, or even, I think it was a monthly limit. And because of that, their, their, their ability to provide water to their customers was threatened by the state. So, again, it was government. And, uh, so they did, they did what they had to do, and I appreciate that. But, but getting them back to using some water from these wells would, would be a good long-term solution. We, I think we should encourage that, and it takes some pressure off of Cheney, and it gets these people back into such, maybe a long-term solution that would solve this, uh, by using our water everywhere more, more carefully. So, I guess I, I would respectfully disagree, Mr. Commissioner Dennis, that I think that we ought to turn these on for a short time and, uh, more clearly communicate. I think I said enough. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, I'm just amazed at 2 million gallons a day was going on in those four-month period. So, back when we were, when I was learning more about water than I ever thought I would a few years ago. So, the city averages about 60 million gallons a day for their citizens. Summertime gets up to potentially 100 million gallons. Wintertime, 40 or 50 million gallons. So, 2 million gallons, 2 million gallons out of 60 for just this area is incredibly impressive numbers. And when we did the water reuse, the gray water used for Spirit, largest employer in the state, they use, uh, of gray water, they use about a million and a half gallons a day, sometimes up to 2 million. So, this is incredible.
Well, because it's being used for de-watering, uh, DWR allowed the 700 gallons per minute per well. So, that really adds up.
I just, I just, given that is a point of, point of whatever, point of depression.
Thank you. And, and one of the reasons we're even sitting here talking about this, uh, June 13th, Time Sentinel, front page says, Kansas has never had this much rain in a May, and that is our problem. Cody, where you got it?
Well, just to real quickly go through, uh, the highlights of that one-page sheet that I asked, handed around, we started asking 211 back at the beginning of the month to open up their, I'm sorry, we asked United Way to open up their 211 call center to give people the chance to phone in, say, this is where I live, this is, uh, the, the amount of damage I had or the type of damage I had. They asked some basic questions, contact information, insurance questions, all that. And we knew that the information that we wanted to glean for this, we had to have a better idea of who was really affected on, on the high end of the scale versus the low end. And so, we turned to Mark with the appraisers' office, and he and his team came up with two questions that we could ask to sort of weed out the, the higher-end threats from the lower end. Does your basement contain a living space? And a living space is defined as having a bedroom, bathroom, or kitchen in the basement. And then, did the water in your basement reach the electrical outlets in the wall, which is basically about 18 inches off the ground? And we had a, a third question if they didn't have a basement, but everybody that called had a basement. So, we only asked them those two additional questions, and that helped us weed out. So, if you look at the monitor, you can see the big number in the upper left-hand corner is 236. This is not, this is something that was put together by Jack Joseph and the G I S team here in the county that's incorporating the data that's been called in to 211. And they've plotted all the, the damage reports that we've got. So, uh, on the right here, you can see this tall graph with the homeowner's insurance questions. 226 people out of the 236 had homeowners. Most did not have flood insurance. The only ones that knew for sure that they did were 11 of the respondents. But then, we get to those questions. Do you have a basement, bed, or bath in the kitchen? So, we'll turn that filter on, and you'll watch the number drop from 236.
Cody, I just have to stop you for a second, because I called the number myself, and I was not asked those questions.
How early did you call?
Um, I, no, it was in May. Yeah, it was in May.
Okay. The first people that called, they were about, I can't remember now for sure, there was a couple dozen on the list that had called 211 before we started to ask, have them ask these extra questions.
Well, that is making me very happy.
Well, we, we didn't realize the extent of the flood damage. We didn't realize we were going to have to gather this data, so we didn't have those questions being asked. They were only asking the uninsured, and they were asking the nature of the damage. So, there were 160 out of these people that said that they had the living space, and I click one more, and of those, we'll turn on this other filter that also answered yes to having the, uh, the water reach the basement sockets. And so, we've got 19. Now, those 19, that does not mean absolutely they had major damage. That's only a indicator that there's a potential for major damage in those homes. So, I reached out yesterday to try and contact all 19 of those people on the list. I was able to make contact with 13 of them. And of those 13 that I talked to, fewer than four and probably zero are going to qualify for major damage. Now, why is major damage so important? Well, major damage is the key indicator that the Small Business Administration or SBA uses to make a disaster declaration for a county. If we've got at least 25 homes or businesses that sustain major damage, they will declare us eligible for SBA low-interest loans. That would apply to both homeowners and to businesses as well. We're probably not going to get that. But that is, that's why we're collecting this data, to see how close we were to being able to meet that trigger, and it's not looking good. Uh, the other deck declarations that are in effect, the, the governor issued a disaster declaration, I think it's up to 63 counties now. Of those 63, the president has approved 33 so far for emergency federal disaster declaration. That's public assistance only, and by that, I don't mean the general public, I mean publicly-funded agencies, tax entities like cities, counties, townships, and the like. Anybody that suffered, or rather, incurred losses, expenses due to emergency life-saving measures, they are eligible for reimbursement under those declarations. We do not fall into that category. We did not require any additional assistance from the state while response was underway. And, and the recovery aspects of it, as we add up the damages, we are nowhere close to our $1.88 million local trigger to be able to, uh, qualify for any of that reimbursement. So, those are a couple of the reasons why we are not part of that disaster declaration process. That's the public side. The other side of the house is the individual assistance that everybody is looking for. The easiest one to get, again, those SBA loans, probably not going to get there. The harder ones to get are things like housing, you know, temporary housing like we saw after Katrina, um, federal handouts to help with damage repairs, unemployment, disaster unemployment, those type of things. Very hard to get, very high threshold, and the state at this point does not seem to be inclined to ask for that, because they know it's not going to be granted. I forgot to mention on the SBA loans, one other way you can qualify for those, if your county doesn't have the 25, if you are contiguous to a county that has 25 and they get the declaration, you automatically qualify as well. We've reached out to all the other emergency managers around us, none of them anticipate meeting that trigger as well. We've talked to the state, they aren't seeing any indications that anybody's going to qualify for SBA, with the one exception of Lawrence and Douglas County, and that was due to the tornado, not due to the flooding. So, just real quickly, uh, the PA declarations, no mutual aid from the state was required, there's not enough damage to our infrastructure to be eligible for federal reimbursement. So, no local disaster declaration, no money expected. The individual assistance through the SBA loans, we're still gathering this information, and if we can get some callers, we had four more callers overnight after I talked to some of those people yesterday. They said, oh, I don't think my neighbors have called yet. Well, tell your neighbors to call. So, they're still calling, yes.
Do you mind if we stop this and get back on the water wells? I mean, this hasn't, I mean, I get what you're saying, but this was supposed to be about water wells.
Well, I was told, I'm sorry, I was told that there was a commissioner that wanted to hear, uh, update on the numbers to 211.
This is about my district, water wells. I mean, right?
Sure.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
I mean, I'm getting, yeah, I'm getting a little frustrated here, because, I mean, these people need relief today, and we're talking about disaster declarations that may or may not happen. And, and I get that somebody asked you to do it, but I thought this was about my district, and I'm hearing all these other people talk about things that isn't what the people down in Salem Township.
Well.
They're concerned about the water wells being turned on, unless you're going to say about the state funding that or something.
No, I'm, I'm not. I was just responding to a request to provide Commissioner. Information that was about what happened this time around, and people, as you say, that are suffering this time around.
Exactly. But, but this is about water wells down in Hayesville.
We could table Commissioner.
I have one, one last question. How are we letting people know to call this number? No disrespect, I just want to ask this for a moment.
No, it's not, no.
We, the county communications put it out through our own social media, it was picked up by the traditional media, and it ran on several newscasts.
Is United Way helping?
United Way, uh, will put it out through their social media as well. Well, in any way we can get the word out, we're getting the word out.
Chairman, I wanted to bring up, um, this topic has gone on a little further than we thought. I know we're two commissioners having 10 o'clock agreement. Do we want to table Jason to talk about legislative agenda, and can we wrap up this topic so that two commissioners can hit a meeting that they were scheduled for out of their office?
And what's Jason's schedule look like? Are you going to be able to come back? I hate to bring you back and not, I know you got, had to go through security to get in here.
Always have to come back.
Thank you.
Any other final questions on this?
Well, I, obviously, um, I agree with everything Commissioner Dennis said. It, it, it's not an ideal situation. I, I would like to do something, um, even if it was 30 or 60 days. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Manager, meeting with the commissioners, figuring out if we can get it, you know, get the support. I know this isn't like a formal vote process. So, I mean, we potentially could bring it up as an opportunity item tomorrow at the meeting where we form a decision on something. But I, you know.
Mike, can I do that? Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Do the two commissioners that have to leave, who are the two commissioners that have to leave?
Commissioner, no, Commissioner, that Mike's right. Do you want to continue, sir, and have Jason talk to the remaining commissioners? Okay.
And why don't we let, excuse the two commissioners that have to go? And, uh, as long as Jason's here, we might as well talk about where we're at.
She has to go.
Oh, it's three of you got to go?
She's first.
Okay. Well, if we're losing three, why, we've lost a person.
We'll reschedule Jason. How about that?
Okay. Very good. Well, sorry about, uh, cutting this short. I know there's a couple of other things we want to talk about, but, uh, the legislative agenda is something that we do need to feed back on. We've already got a few things, corrections and so forth, that we need some help with